Good morning. Welcome to the Java Cafe. Java fans.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning. Good morning. Today is, hold on. A little bit better. Today is Tuesday, July 1st, 2025. It's July. It's for me, that's like officially some, well, Memorial Day is kind of like the start to the official summer for me. Um, but it is July. My sister's, my baby sister's birthday is this month. Nisi's birthday is on Friday. Um, also today is a birthday of a sister that is very, very, very special to me. She's a leader in this community. She creates spaces and places, moves, has moved in education policy and the arts and things like that. And so I would like to say a very special happy birthday to my sister Sheena Collier, who is the founder of and CEO of Boston Wild Black. And so Sheena, um, happy birthday to you. Um, I appreciate you and everything you do for the city. Um, and yeah, she's 25 years old today. So do me a favor for those of you that know her and can tag her, whatever. Tag her in the comments and help me say happy birthday to Sheena Collier. Um, listen, some of you are either surprised that I'm on at 10:00. I put out a flyer that said 10:30. Uh, we have two guests coming in today. It's testimony Tuesday. So both of them are going to testify about two different things. The first person that's coming in is Coach H. Um, he is a coach here in the city of Boston that works, has been in, lives in the neighborhood, and also knows the young people who feel that they will benefit from what's going on over at White Stadium. Yesterday, as I shared on Facebook, um, as sometimes considered a journalist or whatever, I got a press release yesterday that the Franklin Park Coalition will be, um, having a press conference today at 2:00 PM. And so I responded and said, said, hey, you know, I have a gap. Would you like to come on? And so we have, uh, Coach H that will come in at about 10:15. And then at 10:30, City Council President Rusi Louisjen is coming in to talk with us about some recent decisions out of Washington DC in reference to our Haitian brothers and sisters, um, here in the city, but just nationally as well. Um, and so we're going to talk about that and hear from her about what's going on locally. Um, also, uh, Attorney General Andrea Campbell, um, basically made a plane. I saw a story yesterday that said that she, um, is, uh, Massachusetts birthright citizenship is okay here in Massachusetts. It's, it's a state thing now. So, you know, based on what the Supreme Court decided. So we talked a little bit about that yesterday and we're not going to talk a lot about it today. Tyrone, what's up, brother? Good to see you in the room. Let's go in the Java Cafe and see who's in the room this morning. Good morning again, Tyrone. Nariki beautiful. Good morning. Good to see you in the room. Nisi, who has her birthday coming up Friday. Good to see you in the room. Sister Debbie, good morning to you. Good to see you in the room this morning. Mama Java, good morning to you. Good to see you in the room. Michelle D. Smith, good morning. Good to see you in the room. Pastor Marion, happy first day of July to you as well. Also, I think I got everyone that is over on the Facebook side. My friend, the pastor Sharon Cornelius, Sharon Cornelius, Sharon Cornelius. Pastor, pastor, pastor. Karen, good to see you in the room this morning. Rita, good morning to you. Good to see you in the room this morning. I got everybody over on Facebook. Let's go over. Oh, boy, we got quite a few folks over here on Instagram. Uh, Maximo Shimora, uh, Mama Java's over here. Um, uh, Rob, good to see you over here, brother. Um, Faith. Hold on. Faith Fit Led Marty is on. Light Story, good morning to you over here. Good to see you all. Um, uh, Mahar, uh, Ma Hernandez, good morning to you. Good to see you in the room over on Instagram as well. Opal Thompson, good morning to you. Good to see you in the room this morning as well. So it is testimony Tuesday. As I said, um, Coach H is coming in at 10:15. And also City Council President Rusi Louisjen is coming in, um, at, um, 10:30. Did I say 8:15 and 10:15? Well, 10:15. He's coming in. So yesterday, Shakira. Shakira, good morning. Good to see you in the room over on Instagram. Shakira of Shakira's Story, advocate in our community, author. Uh, you'll be hearing from her sometime this summer as well, um, about her, uh, book that she's doing. And some of you that are familiar with her, uh, is familiar, uh, or would be familiar with the work she does around, uh, intimate partner violence, gender-based violence, domestic violence. So, um, good to see you in the room, sis. I looked over and said, and saw that, but good to see you in the room this morning. Um, yesterday. 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 Y'all were interesting, uh, in reference to, you know, a question that was asked and, you know, my in real time response. I got a lot of texts. Um, I posted it on Facebook, um, in reference to, you know, the, the mayor's race or whatever. So, um, yeah, y'all, y'all were very, very, very funny yesterday. Um, and so every, you know, every once in a while, we'll, um, touch on those subjects and things like that. Want to make you also aware of some dates. Um, not a whole lot, but one of the major things I want to make sure that people keep in mind that on Wednesday night, August, oh, Lord have mercy, Wednesday night, October 15th, 2025, we will gather for the Red Cup Awards. Now, some people may wonder, Jimmy, what are the Red Cup Awards? My first anniversary, um, we couldn't gather. It was 2021. I think Delta Cron or, uh, one of the strains of the early onset, um, or about a year after the onset. March of 21, we couldn't gather, uh, but we did a virtual anniversary. In March of 2022, in my anniversary, I decided to acknowledge a few people, um, that, you know, uh, uh, passed away that transitioned and named a couple of awards. Red Cup within the brand, and we gave them Red Cup Awards that had their award information on it. Um, citations and acknowledgements from the city, state, and federal level. And so the first Red Cup Award is dedicated to Katrina Uber Clark, who is, uh, who was a volunteer guru. She worked, I believe, at Tufts Insurance and had us out there often, not just there, um, but in different places and curated volunteers. And so there is a Katrina Uber Clark Community Volunteerism Award. Um, there is also the, um, David Hart Humanitarian Award that is named after a charter member, um, of the Java Cafe, the husband of La Sonya Hart. Um, and we will, um, keep his legacy alive as well as Katrina's as well. Additionally, uh, that year, we also named, I believe, the, um, third one was the Java with Jimmy Award. I give an award to someone based on who I want to give an award to. And, uh, last year, for the fourth year, we added the Dr. Thea James, uh, Public Health Award, and Dr. James was the first recipient of that award. And so this year, on July 15th, we will drop that information and you will be able to nominate people for all three of the awards. Not just, you know, putting in a name. No, you're going to need to put in their name. Definitely their contact information, just in case, uh, they are chosen to get the award. And also a couple paragraphs about why you believe they should receive the award based on the description of the three people that I named. I'm still going to pick the Java with Jimmy Award, obviously. Um, so that's coming up on October 15th. We will be at the Museum of Science. There may or may not be a, 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 a small, uh, investment made. So, you know, you, you'd be, uh, um, what's the word? Um, invested in showing up, um, some things we've had. Mm-hmm. I'm gonna leave that alone. Anyway, Luther. Luther Pickney just joined over on Instagram. What's up, br- I missed you last Thursday. I'm gonna leave that right there. What's up Luther? Good to see you in the room this morning. All right, I do have a couple of guests coming in, so I'm just going to check the phone real quick to make sure. Uh, uh, ba-dum, ba-dum, ba-dum. Okay, I need to figure out who this is. Okay, I will check in with that brother. We're about to do a, uh, anyway, got something on a national level going on and he just, uh, confirmed this morning. Uh, Kenya, is it Kenya? Kenya, good morning. I'm so glad you weren't in the Java Cafe yesterday. Cause if you, oh, Jesus, it was hot up in here yesterday. But Kenya, good morning. Good to see you in the room. Talk Chrissy, Talk Chrissy, good morning to you over on Instagram. Good to see you over there. Um, October 15th is the date to dress up and get fine in support of Java with Jimmy. Thank you, Nariki, for that. Not too, too dress up, but, but nice. I want you to be comfortable, but yeah, you know, definitely. There's a color scheme. Red, black, and white, obviously. Um, but yeah, listen, just be there. We're going to celebrate. We're going to have a good time. Um, Daniel Laurent, no, sir. Daniel Laurent is in, brother. We gotta connect before Wednesday, Thursday, tomorrow, or Thursday at latest. Um, good to see you in the room. It's so funny. Daniel's over on YouTube. Shakira's over on Instagram. Um, we did a project with them, um, a few months ago. Um, Daniel put out a movie, um, and Shakira supported that with the work and programming she does as well. So Daniel, good to see you in the room this morning over there. And so mother, it is October 15th, October 15th, um, at the Museum of Science. That is taking place. We're going to have live music. We're going to have a DJ. We're going to have food. Um, we're going to do some reminiscing. We're going to give out the awards. And then we're going to have a good time. Yes, on a Wednesday night. Um, some of you will need to get to work the next morning, but you know, we'll get you out of there. Bye. It starts at seven. I found out, uh, at the Museum of Science on this weekend. It starts at seven. Um, so we'll be out of there like 10:30-ish. So plan on it now, everybody. October 15th. Um, don't forget, more importantly, um, the nominations will open on July 15th. You will be able to nominate three different people. In the past, I have, uh, uh, did a man and a woman for each award, and I believe we'll continue with that tradition this year. So you can nominate a man, you can nominate a woman. I just like to keep that balance, um, in that place. I think that's going to be the case, but just look out for the nomination information that's coming out. And the event is on October 15th. We'll keep you abreast of the details of that. If there'll be a small fee, nothing major. But I'm glad to have the partnership with the Museum of Science that we will have two floors. We're going to have our awards and then we're going to have, you know, there's going to be a few resource tables from our partners there as well for you all to get some, um, Daniel said midnight, um, to get some information from our partners and, and share some of their resources that will be there as well. But we're going to eat. We're going to have a good time. We're going to celebrate. Members of our community who are leaderful in the spaces of humanitarianism, um, also in community volunteerism, and also in public health, and also, I don't know what my criteria will be for the Java with Jimmy Award this year, but we'll keep you abreast. So October 15th, 7:00 PM, Museum of Science. Thank you so much, Milagro. Speaking of Milagro, hold on for one second, y'all. I just had to turn Alexa to volume zero because we will definitely be in an extended time today. Coach, um, H should be joining us in just a couple of minutes. Let me just check with him and make sure that he's good. Uh, ba-dum, boom, 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 ba-dum, boom. All right, let me make sure he's good. We did sort of put this together last minute. Um, so hopefully he will be jumping on the link in a couple of seconds and he will be chatting with us about, um, the, uh, White Stadium piece. I just seen a connection here. Um, Michelle, I don't know if Daniel will be able to see your comment because he's on YouTube, but letting you know. Julie B. Creative, good morning to you. Good to see you in the room. Daniel, Michelle D. Smith said, get in touch with her. She's over on, um, Facebook and you're on YouTube. Michelle, thank you again for, actually it is the, it's the Red Cup Awards of, Red Cup Awards five-year celebration. It's a Java-iversary. We'll, we'll figure it out. All right, um, hopefully we'll hear from the coach in a minute. In the meantime, don't forget that City Council Rusi Louisjen will come in with us and chat about what's going on in reference to our Haitian brothers and sisters. And some of you may not be familiar, but there was some temporary status given some years ago. There's been a lot of ups and downs with that with COVID and things like that. And this administration, um, is, is bent. This administration is aggressive. The National, uh, 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 Tunnel Dump Administration is very aggressive around this immigration piece. Abstract Minor, good morning, sis. Good to see you in the room. Um, very bent on, on this, you know, um, closing our borders and, and, uh, 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 turning off the fire under the melting pot that we are as America. We, we, we're considered a melting pot. Everybody comes here and we blend our cultures and our foods, our beliefs, our traumas, um, and things like that. We've always been an open country to some extent. If you come here, you know, illegally, illegally, there's a lot of even special dispensation if you come in illegally because in a lot of countries, life circumstances force you to want to come here for a better way. And so I believe it's, the number that I believe I saw, um, is around 500,000 people. I don't know if that's nationally or not. I will literally check right now, um, about the stats of that, um, uh, okay, we're going to find out exactly what the impact there and the amount, specifically hopefully here in Boston, but within Massachusetts. We also understand yesterday, Charlene. Hi, Charlene. Um, can you put a little bug in the Museum of Sciences ear about being on the right side of history by showing how immigrant communities like Haitians have been helped? I've helped shape science in the US because, because I'm of Haitian descent, I may be biased, but something like Haitian ingu- ingenuity, uh, science born of necessity could highlight how Haitian communities have used creative environmental science and medicine to rev- Charlene, that ain't nothing but a, so, is it, is it, is it, and no, you know what? I'm not even going to ask that. It's a creative idea. I was going to ask if there was an issue, but no, Charlene, I mean, you're going to make me cuss. Um, yes, we'll figure that part out. I'll make a connection. Um, I can also, we're there in August, um, and so I did two segments last time. So Charlene, if you want to come and bring somebody with you that knows this space. All right. All right, Charlene, reach out. You got the number. Let me know. Let's make that happen. And then she said after that, good morning. Good morning, Charlene. Good to see you in the room. Just being on topic. Absolutely. Got, got you. That's why I said, I didn't think it was motivated from an issue or something. Just you being a creative that you are. And so the information I want to get, um, all right, hold on. Uh, okay. Um, okay. So there's a termination of temporary status. Uh, Department of Homeland Security has announced the end of temper- TPS is what it's called for Haitian nationals, uh, effective September 2nd, 2025, which means around 500,000, 20, 521,000 Haitians, many of whom live and work in Boston, will lose legal status and face potential deportation. That's 521,000 just right here in Boston, if I understand and read that right. Oh, I'm sorry. 521,000, many of whom live and work in Boston. Many of that amount are here in Boston. So we're going to talk with our counselor in just a few moments, um, about that and also be able to share some resources. Um, okay, I don't believe we, uh, the coach, uh, I don't, boom, will be able to, or is joining. The counselor is going to be in in a couple of seconds. So we can stick right here, give some context and set the stage to why I think it's important that we address this issue, not only for our Haitian brothers and sisters, but Venezuelan, um, and others, anybody that is, I was going to say not born here to some extent, and that, you know, visas and, and, you know, statuses and whatnot, but, you know. It's testimony Tuesday. We will stay focused and positive this morning, like people that are sitting over in DR, enjoying sunrises. Pam, you sent the picture to, um, hold off for one second, guys. We're going to take a commercial. I think, uh, calling doesn't work, but let me just see. I think this is my guest. We'll be right back with you. All right, that was not my guest reaching out. So, um, again, um, Charlene said, um, so anyway, we were talking about the impact on our, um, people that are, uh, uh, you know, weren't born here, birthright citizenship and whatnot. And so I want to kind of stay focused. Um, we are going to, you know, be real about the issue and share resources. And Counselor Louisjen will tell us what they're doing, um, in reference to, uh, here in the city of Boston. And also I mentioned that I saw a story yesterday that Attorney General, um, uh, there was some confusion, I guess. Uh, um, there was some confusion about the, uh, the brother thought it was tomorrow. Um, no worries, blah, blah, blah. Okay, hold on. Uh, so we'll figure that out. There is a press conference today from the Franklin Park Coalition. Um, so tune in for that at 2:00 PM. I thought about trying to make it up there, but I'm not because this is vacation week. And also speaking of that, I got a call yesterday and I was asked, so, are you taking next week off the show? And I was like, uh, probably not. Um, but we may have, you know, a little bit of break. I'll let you all know. I did commit, so about a year ago, I committed to taking a week off a quarter. Um, it's just interesting because first time I had to because of, you know, surgery. Uh, second time, I think it was the holidays. The third time, actually, it's only been twice. So if we do it next week, it'll be the third time. So I'll keep you all abreast about that. I just being off of here and away from y'all for a whole week when ain't nothing wrong. I don't know. I don't know if I can do that. Kenya, thank you. We've been doing commercials here and there. If you know some folks that would like to advertise on Java with Jimmy, we, we reach about 100,000 people engagements, um, in views just on my personal Facebook page a month. Then there's Java with Jimmy, then there's Twitter, then there's YouTube. Um, and so if you know some people that would like to advertise an event, an initiative that would like to partner, um, or would like to market their product, have them reach out, info@javawithjimmy, and we will check in with them, give them our rates. There are different rates for nonprofit events. If you are having a fundraiser and you are raising money, we're going to, and we ask everybody, what's your budget? This platform has had to hustle to stay in existence for almost six years. So anyway, I don't know how I got on that. Let me stay away from anything like that as our counselor is getting ready to come on. Um, it's wild watching this election cycle of, uh-oh. Charlene, I don't know if you was aware of what happened yesterday, but I'm going to start reading comments before I put them on the screen. I haven't seen this whole comment yet, so I don't know what my response is going to be. So I'm going to look down. "It's wild watching this election cycle in Boston unfold. Knowing some of the loudest voices telling folks how to vote are the same ones who proudly backed the man whose policies targeted immigrants while they themselves are immigrants or children of immigrants." There was nothing else to say there. "Community doesn't always mean free." Charlene, don't, 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 don't start me up this morning. We got Counselor Louisjen coming on and post yesterday, um, you know, help me to help myself to behave. Um, so yes. Charlene. Charlene, guess who started it yesterday? Dina. Nita's mom. Oh, God. We'll stick to a national, well, she was talking about local. Lord have mercy. Um, I'll say this. I've posted a lot about it and I haven't given too much on show in live commentary. Please do not think that the spirit in which, uh, uh, the White House is moving, white racist nationalists across the country are moving, please do not be deceived that that emboldenedness in spirit is alive and well right here in the city of Boston. Roxbury, Dorchester, Mattapan, South Boston, Napontit, Charlestown, and other, Watertown, uh, uh, well, Watertown's now Boston. And to Charlene's point, that emboldenedness, though since 2008, when Obama got elected and, and, and you've seen this progressive movement and, and, and the escalation of, of, of black entrepreneurs and whatnot. It's really come to a height during this administration under the leadership of Shigun Idiwo. Jesus, Lord. City Counselor, uh, uh, Louisjen is getting ready to come in, and so I'm going to behave. Um, okay. Um, so there was some confusion around a date. They thought I was tomorrow. It wasn't all today. Um, so I guess in their translation to the guest, they read tomorrow, which they think it's tomorrow. And no, it's today. Um, so, okay. Um, Charlene. Pam said, Charlene, out here setting the chat ablaze. Lord have mercy. I'm going to behave. Rhonda. Lord have, mm. I'll just say, you know, by which the squares you sit. You know what that means. That thing, oh, Jesus, Lord. Stop behaving. Make this after dark. Char, nope. We got our counselor getting ready to come in. Um, we got our counselor getting ready to come in, uh, in just a few moments. Now hopefully she makes it in, uh, this morning and that's the counselor. So I know there's a lot going on. In all fairness, there was just probably, probably, um, some confusion. probably um, some confusion um, around just day. So um, speaking of the wonderful, I wasn't going to say the devil, speaking of, oh, she's so I could see the back, not the backdrop. I can see a preview of them when they come in. For some reason, she's a little sparkly this morning. Um. Were you out in the sun or something?
I was, I was, I was out um, you know, and I was like, I gotta make sure that I'm back for for Jimmy. So.
Yeah, let me, let me just say this. Our counselor, we take selfies and pictures and I'll just say that she is on brand. I'll just leave that right there. She's always on brand. Counselor, it is good to see you in the room. I am glad that we could at least start with some laughter. Charlene is in here among some of oh, um, she's probably fixing the screen um, or just went to audio. Um, but Counselor, when you get in, turn that camera back on. Um, but there she goes. You could, you could listen. I have all type of tech issues over here. I found out the other day. I did a whole show with the mute button on.
Oh, really?
Oh, God. Yes, I I did that. But you know, Charlene and I in here are talking about some of the local impact of what's going on nationally and our Haitian brothers and sisters along with Venezuelan. To some extent, you know, I was getting ready to say if you were not born here, but that to some extent is attempting to be put at risk. So let me back up with all of that. I just said, Counselor, there's a lot going on, you know, media and all this other stuff. I have to ask you with all due respect. Um, how is Ruth C doing?
Um, I always appreciate that question, Jimmy, and you know, I'm so glad I went to church on Sunday because I am pressing forward. I am pressing on, right? Um, I think the news on Friday about temporary protective status was a blow, you know, Friday was just a hard and a heavy day for me, but we press on because that's what we know and that's what we've done and that's what our ancestors have done for, that's what they did. And so we press on towards the mark. And so I'm pressing on. I'm going to continue to fight and I'm going to continue to do what I can to make sure that everyone feels seen um, and valued at least by their local government, even if not by the federal government.
Thank you for that. I'm not going to challenge you too much because you went right to the work um, and didn't really.
The work is personal, right? Like, how am I doing? I cannot unlink that from how my people are doing. And I mean, my people in the broadest sense of the word. I mean that with, you know, patients who are facing, you know, all sorts of harm because of temporary protected status. I mean, our seniors who are at risk of losing their healthcare because of this ugly health bill. I I mean, the funeral that I went to Friday morning as a result of domestic violence. I mean, like I, I am not well if my community is not well. And so we are pressing on. We are pressing forward. So that's why that was that answer because it's it's hard to answer, answer the how are you right now? When there was so much pain, when there was so much heaviness, they're making cuts to the African American um, museum. Like, all of this stuff is heavy. And it's tied to my response in terms of how am I Ruth C doing? And which is why I must say that I went to church to feed my soul on Sunday and I'm pressing on.
Counselor, thank you one for the nice sort of in love check and 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 to be very honest, that's why I reached out yesterday and said, hey, are you free? Because I know you're an attorney and you're the city council president, but I know you are a Haitian woman and I know this is personal to you. So I will say a little bit, to an extent, forgive me, but 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 that that.
I just didn't want you to feel like I was giving you a political answer because it wasn't.
Not political at all. I just thought you wasn't telling us how you were doing, but you bought it all back together and that's one of the reasons why we're here. And so to some extent, we know what what it is. I explained a little bit of the TSP or TPS. Yes, and so 521,000 people, is that nationally?
That's nationally.
And a big.
That amount here here in Boston.
Okay, so there's a good amount here here in Boston. And so um, when you talked about locally, what is it? You know, we've been targeted, the mayor's been targeted, Sanctuary City. I just saw that the Trump administration is going to is suing, attempting to sue LA. My first thought was they're going to try to sue Boston, you know, as well. And so what is it locally that you, the council, the mayor? What is it that we're doing in the city of Boston? I know we have the um, Trust Act, I believe that that kind of addresses this generally, but is there any aggressive moves um, that is being done to get ready, oh, God, um, to to ensure that this date either doesn't happen and we don't have, you know, influence on federal law here. Uh, just tell us what's going on, Counselor, and and how we can support and what it is we need to do to support specifically our Haitian brothers and sisters along with many others.
Yes, so that's a great question, Jimmy. So number one, there are lawsuits. There are lawsuits challenging the Trump administration's decision to end temporary protected status. And just so we are clear, right? And I even got, I I went back and forth with the globe about this, okay? Just so that we are clear, people with temporary protective status are, many of them are folks who have been here since 2010. The designation was given in 2010. Many of them are people who um, are, you know, working here, purchase homes here, have kids in our schools here. They are our neighbors. They are people that we know. And so challenge this, challenging this legally is really important. This has been a difficult Supreme Court. That is true. It's been a very difficult Supreme Court. So the extent to which we are going to get reprieved from the Supreme Court, let's wait and see. But while we're waiting, we are fighting, which means that we continue to make the argument. Do you know that there are, you know, so many Haitian people who work in the healthcare industry, who stand in the gap as home health, home healthcare workers, working hospitals? Our economy would take a huge hit if you don't have um, Haitians who were temporarily protected status or who came here on the Biden program. If you don't have them working in our industries, a lot of those industries suffer major, major devastation. I was talking to a union leader yesterday who was talking about the importance of Haitians at our airports who and those are the folks have temporary protected status. So we would see a really big economic hit. And that's why in the statement that I put out, it was not just about the moral argument about how these are our neighbors, these are people that we are called to care for. They are our Bostonians. They are part of our city. It is an economic argument. If the heart don't get you, let your pocketbook get to you and the importance in our economy. And so it's, you know, and I've been on the phone with the governor who is similarly devastated by this decision and frustrated by what this means for so many of our residents who are here in the Commonwealth. And we're not just talking about Haitian residents. We are talking about El Salvadorians. We are talking about people from Sudan. We are talking about so many people who have this temporary protective status designation. But ever we have seen this administration and this president has a particular animus for black immigrants, for Haitian immigrants. I do not know why, but for some reason rooted in racism and xenophobia, there is an animus towards Haitian immigrants that has been proven time and time again, hatred, and he is unable to lower the cost of your eggs. He is unable to actually really deliver in a material way that matters or that would have an impact on the American people. So what do you do instead? You go to the hate. You go to the xenophobia. You go to the other things on which you think that you can win because hate, um, because you you built a campaign on hate. And so that's where we are. And then we're going to continue fighting and we're going to continue with this Boston City Council a few weeks ago, pass an amended budget where we put more money in for legal services for nonprofit organizations as they advise residents on issues um, related to legal status with other legal status that they're able to get, so on and so forth.
Thank you for that. And so that is one of the, one of the pieces that that there's money in the budget to address this. We know that budget reflects priorities. So thank you all for doing that. Um, again, I reached out. We just confirmed you less than 12 hours ago. And so at any point, Counselor, that you or your staff want to share, I think it's iffy, iffy. Um, Richie uh, got me, made me aware of them. And so if 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 you want to text or put in a private chat, or even if your staff is in resources legally for people. Um, and so this September 2nd date, have we exhausted on a, on a federal level, I know you're an attorney, on a federal level, have we, I presume we haven't exhausted every way to fight? And then though this, you know, what the Supreme Court said and whatnot, let's say nothing changes September 2nd. What happens on on September 2nd or around there?
Well, um, so it's continued to be fought in court. Um, they, if this were to stand and go forward, if our legal arguments fail, if our economic arguments fail, if public pressure fails. Um, and mind you, there are Republicans, there's a Republican congressman, congressman in New York who's saying, whoa, 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 stop this. This is going to harm because he understands the value of Haitian TPS holders to his district, to his, uh, to the local economy. So there are people pushing back even in his own administration. Whether it will be enough is another question. Marco Rubio, Secretary of State formerly was supportive and now he's sort of become, you know, part and parcel and inseparable with President Trump. So maybe his mood and his attitude has changed. But so, yes, they fall out of stat, they would fall out of status and not have legal status here. So I want to mention two things that um, uh, that the director of Homeland Security mentioned in the register that revoked and terminated temporary protected status. She stated um, country conditions have improved in Haiti. Their review has been that country conditions have improved in Haiti, which anybody who states something like that, you know that is an 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 active and affirmative lie because country conditions are still very, very much harmful. Armed groups control the capital. They are, they continue to kill people. They continue to make it impossible for flights to 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 go in another country. The airport isn't open. The armed groups killed my mother's aunt two months ago. And so when you are, when you are saying a bold faced lie that the country conditions have improved, they have not. They have not at all improved. And to state that find some other legal status when you have done away with the CHNB program that would allow them to find alternative status, when there are time limits on which someone can make an asylum claim pursuant to the law. There are no other genuine avenues for people who have been here for decades to make claims for legal status. So the disingenuous, how disingenuous the federal administration is being, even in their statements, even in their termination is is just beyond the pale. It's why I said it's inhumane, it's cruel and it's un-American. Congressman Diana Presley is always saying that the cruelty is the point and this is, this is, there is no better example than this, that the cruelty here is the point.
Counselor, thank you. One, I have to pause and thank you. And we want to send condolences to you and your mom's family. Um, because as you started in saying, this is personal for you. And so we want to just hold space and ask the mother, mothers board and everyone to keep uh, the Louie Jen family uh, and those around her in prayer for the family and also for her and others that are fighting um, for their mental and also for their strength, for their health as well. Counselor, we will make sure that we get some resources that we can be able to share um, with folks. I will try to figure out a way if if we need to either get this, you know, episode translated or whatever. Um, because it it and I want to go back to one point and we see evident on a national level that all of a sudden this administration is now, oh, don't go into the hotels, don't go into the farm areas. Because as you said, if it's not your heart, at least, what did you say? At least think about your pocketbook.
Your pocketbook, yeah.
That's really real for the capitalists somewhat. Um, those that share capitalism and racism, you know what I mean? So if not that, and 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 I'm going to type by any means necessary, if it's for the economy and not from your heart and they get to stay and be uh, enjoy this American dream, then so be it. You know, so uh, we had our counselor, but probably people call, is it people hitting you up while you?
Balancing so much stuff. I'm having to like quickly tap on a bit now.
Get that, Counselor. I did. Again, we started off with a little bit of laughter and I want to be able to end because I know you have a lot going on, but I wanted to thank you for jumping in. And is there either, do you know off your head, I don't want to leave with at least one resource to let folks know, is there a number that folks can call? Is there a website? Anything you're aware of that we can let folks know that they can reach out to if they have questions? Um, you know, and clarity, because the other part and I'll end with this is I did want you to give clarity and it's true, as as concerning as the facts are, we got the facts from you. And we know that some of the tactics of this administration is fear mongering to force people to maybe voluntarily leave and stuff like that. And so I just wanted to make sure that we had the clarification, but then also resources. And so if there's any um, resource that I can share, let me know. But otherwise, I will circle back with the team um, with you and hold on for one second. I have one resource right here that I believe you just sent me. Uh, so I am going to figure out how to, Counselor, you know, I'm I'm, okay.
Yeah, so my office, like literally the day after Trump was inaugurated, we had uh, immigration law 101 from my office because those are the questions we get. So on my Instagram page, there's a link in my link tree, there's a link to an immigration resource guide. It's both in English and Spanish and Haitian Creole. Um, also, if there are people who have questions, the guy has a lot of legal information, but I'll just give the number for the lawyers uh, for civil rights, immigration, defense hotline. That number is 617 988 0606. Again, that's 617 988 0606. And if anyone has any additional questions or wants to reach out to my office, you can always call my office. That number is 617 635 4376. Again, that's 617 635 4376.
All right, I got both of these in here, Counselor. We have the resources. I'm good. Thank you so much for sacrificing the time um, to be with us today. And again, we are uplifting you in prayer and hold on to your faith. It's a big part of our culture and a big part of our strength. And so Counselor, thank you. And anything you need to get out or what, I know you got your own platform and you know, you got reach. We can help get information out. Please let us know and we'll be glad to us support and help.
No, thank you so much for uplifting this issue for informing the people. Literally, this is like, this is why all of our destinies are tied together. It's not just Latinos. It's not just, you know, black immigrants. It's not just black folks. It's not just seniors. It's not just veterans whose benefits everyone. It's all of us who are on the line, regular folk, and we have to learn and figure out how we work and protect each other. Yes, prayers out for the Suya joint family as well, uplifting them. They have a GoFundMe. Like, there's so many people who are hurting as a result of the harm of this administration, institutions, nonprofits, um, individual people who are hurting as a result of the harm of this administration, our, our schools, our universities. And we have to be the ones, people rallying, coming together, protesting. We have to be loud and firm in who we are and who our values are. And in this project of democracy, what it looks like, it doesn't include this for me, doesn't include this, what we're seeing at the federal level. It doesn't include the Trump administration for me. This is not the democracy that I believe in, that I raise my hand to, to, to defend. This is not what it is for me. And I know that's not what it is for so many people, which is why it is important for us to see each other in each other's struggles and for us to lock arms in pushing back against this administration.
Counselor, one last thing, and I want you to stand in your Haitian pride in this. One of the, the, one of the history points of the Haitian culture is the fight back and the revolution. Can you just give us 30 seconds and just pull from that strength and talk to us about the example that was set to 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 to? Because when you were talking, I felt that energy, Jesus. And we we going to need to keep, keep, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, I, what I would say is, you know, we, so we celebrated Juneteenth. We raised a Juneteenth flag on Boston City Hall and shout out to Michael Curry, visionary leader in the health of civil rights here in the city of Boston. He talked about the black freedom struggle. And he talked about how Haiti was the birth of that black freedom struggle, the only country in the world founded from a slavery revolt, the only country. The inspiration for liberation for people in this country, for people in Puerto Rico and their fight for independence, for people in Greece. I was in a parade three months ago in the Greek parade, holding a banner that said, thank you Haiti for giving us moral and material support in our own quest for freedom. So when we are talking about liberation and we're talking about continued movements for freedom, Haiti is at the basin, at the root of that. For 13 years, black folks from Africa took on major superpowers to fight for their freedom, didn't know it was possible, fought with rocks and sticks at the beginning against na, international powers who had to sell, when we talk about the Louisiana Purchase in the United States, there would be no Louisiana Purchase had there not been the struggle for Haitian independence that forced Napoleon to to sell Louisiana and and the encompassing era so that he can subsidize his war, his fight against freedom of the Haitian people in the island of Kiskaya that we commonly call Hispaniola. And so when we talk about our destinies being tied together, Michael Curry did that on Juneteenth. The Greek uh, our Greek uh, community did that um, two months ago when we walked in their parade. And we continue to do that around the country. And we're talking about the struggles for freedom, whether they be in Sudan, wherever they be throughout the world, that our freedoms are tied together. None of us are free until all of us are free. And the idea, I will end with this. I reject the notion that in order for us to care about our veterans, in order for us to care about any group of people, our firefighters, whoever it may be, that we can't care about somebody else. We can hold space and we can do the hard, is it hard? Yes. Does it get expensive and do we have to figure out trade offs? Yes. But do not any, let anyone believe, make you believe that we can't care about the wholeness and the fullness of our community, our gay community, our black and brown community, our immigrants, our seniors, that we can hold space. And that's why I believe in the city and the work that we're doing at the local level. Because we are proving to people that we can care, all of us. And that's what I believe in. And that's what we are working on every single day on the Boston City Council to prove that we are a city that can care for all of us, from Mission Hill to Beacon Hill, from Mattapan to Charlestown, that we are a city that really can do everything for our residents. Sometimes hard, sometimes we we will get to a point of having to talk about, all right, maybe not this year, we do trade offs. But don't let anyone tell you that it's a zero sum game. We are in a world and in a country of of abundance. And we have yet to figure out how to share that abundance and make that prosperity felt by all. And so that's why even in the moments where I tell you that I'm pressed, that it's hard and it's heavy as it was on Friday. With the funeral, with this TPS decision, with so much hardness, we press on. Because we have people, and I see it every day as an at-large city council, who are committed, who are committed to this project of democracy. On Saturday, I was in West Roxbury and a woman who probably, I had no idea that she had a background in immigrants, came up to me and said, I cannot believe. What this administration is doing with respect to temporary protected status. My mother would have died had it not been for a Haitian TPS worker by her side every single day in her home as a home healthcare worker. She was making the moral argument, but that is also an economic argument. And so just like reject anyone who tells you that in order to care for one of our neighbors, we have to not care about anyone. I don't believe that. That is not the premise of my politics or the premise of how I govern as a president of the Boston City Council.
Counselor, thank you. When you get off of here, I need you to go drink a whole 16 ounces worth of water. Um, and, and take your time that, that you're taking soon. And thank you, thank you, thank you for what you're doing and give it to your colleagues. Um, as well. We'll hear from the mayor around this, uh, less than 24 hours uh, tomorrow morning as well. So. Um, I was gonna say Ruth C. Counselor, thank you so much and we'll see you in community very, very soon.
Thank you, Jimmy. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Folks, I thought it was very important that we hear from her today. Um, to be sure, one to know aware of what's going on. I think her last point, I'll surmise is we can walk and chew gum at the same damn time. So thank her for joining um, this morning. Thank all of you for joining this morning. Charlene. Um, and among others, you know, Ma add Charlene um, to the prayer list as well. She's been a caregiver to a lot of people. Who, a lot of her family members who have migrated here by force or by choice. Um, and so, and also uh, there was a, a death in her family recently. So please add her family to the prayer list. Leslie, it is good to see you in the room this morning. Good to see you in the room. Um, Pam said, if this isn't a mayor, senator, president speech in it. There was a lot of energy there, a lot of energy there in that leadership and we need that energy. Um, to, to keep on pressing for the fight to which she referred. So folks, it is, oh, it's 10:53. Again, uh, there was some confusion around the date, uh, around which day we were going to get folks to from, come from the Franklin Park Coalition. Um, but they are having a press conference at 2:00 PM. And we'll hear some more information about that. I'll reach out to Coach H and see if we can figure something out. Um, either. Later, probably next week. Um, all right. The other thing I wanted to mention. I am aware that there is a few aggressive movements. To where entities have taken a signal and know that they need to inform their policies. Their diagnosis strategies and criteria around uh, uh, mental health when it comes to black folks. There's a study going on right now that is compensated and they are looking to speak with black men. Um, and so if you are interested and want to be screened for this study. I need you to email me at info@javawithjimmy.com. Info@javawithjimmy.com. If you are inter, uh. Maybe if I put the right thing on, I can type. Um, info. At javawithjimmy.com. I can send you the details where you can go and be screened. Um, and have a conversation to see if you're appropriate for this study. I just completed an effort a couple of weeks ago with some brothers and I'm aware of this effort as well. They are really trying to ensure that they get feedback around. Reshaping. There's a whole um, Diagnosis DSM. I forgot what the DSM stand, manual diagnosis. Something manual. I became familiar with it uh, when it was in a version of DSM four. And what that is, is it's, it's a book and criteria that lists if people have these behaviors, this is how you diagnose it. This is how you bill it. But. It's a part of the, the, the uh, psychosomatic therapy system. And so, you know, it's, 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 it's imperative that when there are opportunities and when, when there are initiatives like this, that we can inform what they're doing. We need to take advantage of it. So if you're interested, if you know some black men. Um, some black men across the diaspora around the Caribbean descent, if you will. Um, please have them reach out to me here. All right, that's it for me again. Thank all of you for joining. Ms. Teresa, good to see you. I think I text you this morning. Uh, good to see you in the room. Um, and not just energy, but focus, uh, but fat. Charlie. Fact base energy. Facts are so important. You all have a wonderful day. And we'll see you tomorrow morning at night, tomorrow morning. 9:00 AM, everybody. Tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM. Uh, the mayor will be with us and also Brother Wadi and Sister La Kenya from Family Movement will be with us as well. So please, um. Okay. We're going to hopefully hear from our AG soon too. We haven't had our AG on since she's become AG. Um, so that text just said that they're working on that. So, because I really want to find out what's going on at the state level because there is a fear factor, fear mongering. In some of the media. And so we want to make sure that there's, there's a mental health impact. We can make sure, as Charlene said. Let me go back to that. I was about to hit the end button. Let me go back to her comment. Where she said, Kenya, there was some confusion about. Um, I think they just sent my texts and so it said tomorrow, which I typed yesterday. That's what I'm thinking happened. So there was some confusion. I'm going to try to work them in. Um. Before the end of the week or as late as next week. Um, but 9:00 AM tomorrow, as Sharon said, um, yes, Ms. Teresa, I will eat and drink. Uh, and also there is the email address to reach out about the um. Study as well. Uh, but Kenya, again, my apologies, a little bit of confusion around the day. Um, and I already got two guests tomorrow. I might see um, if we can, um. That means I would be 9:30 tomorrow. I'm supposed to be getting ready to wind down on vacation, y'all. Uh, but no, we want to make sure we have the information. Ms. Teresa, this is one of your shirts. Black Java. We got that coming back too, y'all. We need to have a lot of black Java, no sugar, no cream. I mean, it is black Java kind of every day, but you know. Some intentionality on, on a topic in a show. All right. Dates also want to announce that a few people reached out last thing, I'm, I'm sure. A good friend and sister, she was a featured artist at our gospel event at Grace by Nia a couple of weeks ago. But I wanted to share that our um. Angela Elizabeth, along with others, um, is um. Working with the city of Boston for the Citywide Choir. I think it's called this year, um, Citywide Voices. And so that rehearsal will start taking place sometime in July. There is a link. I'm gonna go ahead and put that in the comments as long as this acts right. There is a link that you can go and sign up. Um, Angie, along with others. Are, um, we'll reach out to you and let you know when rehearsals and things start and the information. Um, so shout out to Sister Angie and others. Um, and Brother Shigun Idiwo and the Mayor's Office of Economic Inclusion and Development. Uh, for their sponsorship of the Gospel Fest. Um, as going, yes, Leslie, you were one of the ones that asked. Um, and so there's the information for you to go and sign up. Um. And yes, Ms. Teresa, you have me looked up. You have me looked at at my sleeves. I'm like, oh, yes, it is very, very nice. All right, y'all, I'm out of here. We'll see you tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM, beginning with Mayor Wu. And then we're going to talk with Brother Wadi from Daddy and Me Literacy Program. I don't have the development company name. Um, that is working with the city uh, around some economic development in memory of Wadi's brother. So that will take place tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM tomorrow morning, y'all.